All right, Mr. Manager.
Mayor, Members of Council, it's good to be here this evening. What we have for an agenda tonight is really a continuation of the council retreat. As you will recall, the three priorities that were discussed back in September were housing, education, and safety. And over the course of the last 60 days, we've had opportunities to talk about education. And tonight, it's a follow-up in terms of housing. We would hope that next week that we could have a touch of the other three items that were discussed at the retreat, and that's infrastructure, technology, and resilience, so that we can keep those themes going throughout the course of the end of the year. So with that said, Mayor, Members of Council, we have two presentations tonight, two discussions. One is an update for the housing study, which we have Susan Perry, as well as our guest from HRNA. And we also have an update on purpose-built communities, a discussion that the council had back in the retreat of September 2015, so we have good news there also. And then there are two closed-session items, but I might hope, Mayor, that we could have our guests go first prior to going into the council interest.
All right.
Okay. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Susan.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Really good to be here with you today. I'm pleased to be joined with Stan Wall, Principal at -- or, excuse me, Partner at HRNA Advisors, and Philip Cash, Principal at HRNA Advisors, both with a Washington, DC office. They bring a wealth of experience in both public-private real estate designing programs and implementing real estate development projects. So today, again, at the council retreat, you heard from Philip and HRNA Advisors the beginning part of our housing study, which was the market analysis and needs assessment. So today, we are really going to introduce the tools and programs that the city has at its disposal and begin discussing a strategic framework or strategy that we want to move forward with as a city to address Norfolk's affordable housing needs. This presentation is just a discussion and an overview of our options, and so we're not requiring any decisions to be made at this time. We really just want to give you an overview of the tools and strategies, and we'll come back later and really talk about funding strategies and more about that framework. So just to remind you, again, this is a process. We're more than just a little bit halfway through that process now. At the council retreat, we did sort of that first bucket, the assessment of the market conditions and an analysis of our housing needs. And over the past couple of weeks, HRNA has done an evaluation of the various housing tools that we have at our disposal. And so this evaluation has led to the development of strategies and potential approaches for a housing plan. So what you'll hear today will be recommendations for how we might implement an affordable housing strategy for Norfolk. If council is in agreement with these recommendations, then we will put together a model and finalize a strategic framework for implementing a plan that will increase the availability of affordable housing in Norfolk. We'll also discuss funding strategies at that time. So today, we'll hear the recommendations that will ultimately inform that plan, and it will be staff's job in conjunction with city council to create the final mix of strategies and activities that we will ultimately implement. So just to remind you of a few important data points that we heard from the housing market that we should keep in mind today as we hear the recommendations. Again, first, Norfolk is a moderate-strength housing market, and we have some areas of strength, but also some areas of weaknesses. And so our neighborhoods can generally be divided into categories of varying housing strength, so strong, tipping point, and fragile sub-markets. The median home value in Norfolk is $177,000. We do have some unmet housing needs, with 55% of our Norfolk renters who are considered rent burdened. So that means that they spend more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And then lastly, as we saw again in that initial market study presentation, Norfolk has a disproportionate burden of public housing compared to the region. So we have 48% of the region's public housing unit while we only share 17% of the region's population. And so just again, some important data points to keep in mind as we think about how we're going to provide affordable housing to our residents in the future. What we've heard from you and leadership consistently that there are really two main values that we want to keep in mind as we do this work. First, we don't want our neighborhoods to fall behind, so we need to strengthen neighborhoods. And jointly with that, we want to deconcentrate clusters of poverty. So we heard that from you at the retreat, that as we deconcentrate poverty, we want to make sure that we also are strengthening neighborhoods. This is also -- these two goals are also consistent with various plans, the Norfolk Plan to Reduce Poverty, Vision 2100, our resilience work, our comprehensive plan. And so the recommendations that you're going to hear today are really designed to ensure that these two values are realized. The housing strategy recommendations are organized around these two goals, again, strengthening neighborhoods and deconcentrating poverty. These are connected, and we're going to discuss the various initiatives that will support these two goals, and then talk about the different programs. And later, we'll come back and talk about funding sources for those programs. But we really think that these are the various programs that we think we can use to reach those goals. And so when we began this process, we informed HRNA that there were specific guiding principles that must be incorporated into any of the recommendations that we put forward. And so these were based on conversations with council members at the retreat and really guide all of the work that we do with poverty reduction in the city. So first and foremost, we want to make sure that we maintain a people focus and a people-first approach. So under the goal of deconcentrating poverty, we will talk about the redevelopment of public housing today. But I think it's really important to note that this redevelopment won't just be about physical buildings, but will also be about resident needs. And so it's not just housing transformation, but also human transformation. So as the manager mentioned, the second presentation will be about purpose-built communities. And so we really feel like aligning this housing study with all of our other poverty-reduction efforts gives us the ability to really maintain that first guiding principle. Secondly, we heard you at the retreat that you want a bold strategy. And so these recommendations develop -- give us a real opportunity to create pathways for residents around housing. So how are we -- how do we build neighborhoods that allow people to connect to opportunities? Although we won't talk about funding strategies today, we know that we'll have a real need to leverage both public and private resources in order to accomplish these goals. And lastly, we want to make sure that any recommendations that we put forth align with existing strategic plans, again, like our resilience work, our poverty reduction plan, Vision 2100, and so on. I'll now turn it over to Philip to talk you through specifically the different initiatives in these two-goal areas.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening. So I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you again, similar to the retreat. If you have -- if you want to stop me, you want to discuss a point in greater detail, or you want me to explain something again, or you want to tell me I missed something critical, please do. This is a presentation, but it's also a great opportunity for a conversation. So as Susan described, as we come back with preliminary recommendations for a strategy, we've really tried to organize them around the goals, so strengthening neighborhoods, deconcentrating poverty, into initiatives, each initiative composed of different programs. I'm not going to go through each program, because that would be quite a long presentation, and I think I bore most folks to tears, but we will get to each point. So starting with strengthening neighborhoods, so this was a goal very consistently -- came up very consistently both from council, but also from each staff person and community members, we've talked about that it's important to strengthen the neighborhoods in Norfolk, especially if we're talking about deconcentrating poverty at the same time, so that any deconcentration of poverty doesn't weaken neighborhoods, and acknowledging that Norfolk is a city with neighborhoods that are strong real estate markets and more fragile real estate markets, and there's a need to address that. The real concept we're talking about putting forward here for the programs is a combination of some existing programs. So the city has a number of effective and pretty well-run housing programs, and then actually adding those with some new programs. But the substantive change we're talking about with this goal is to actually start to concentrate or focus those investments, so that your housing programs really become a neighborhood-based strategy, not just a housing program. You really start to -- the idea there, going to the principles that Susan talked about, is that you start to be able to harness the private market when you invest in concentrated investment in specific neighborhoods, because that actually attracts private market investment. So we're going to talk about three different initiatives within this, increasing homeownership, revitalizing rental, and creating new rental affordable housing. So homeownership is commonly associated with stronger neighborhoods, a higher homeownership is commonly associated with stronger neighborhoods, and it's generally viewed as a way to build the wealth of residents. The city has a few programs that are already moving towards this goal, and really, we're talking about an approach that's about creating new homeowners and then supporting existing homeowners, to actually start to move that homeownership rate up, again, particularly in tipping point and more fragile neighborhoods. The exist -- the gem lots, so these are lots that are owned by the city, are your most obvious and concentrated opportunity to create new homeownership. They're concentrated in a few neighborhoods throughout the city, and that's really the first program that you're already looking at, that we're certainly making a recommendation that you move forward with, a competitive, transparent process that really focuses on homeownership and leverages a lot of the work you've already done. So you've already done work putting together design standards with the neighbors, that's always a big obstacle here, so leveraging that work and moving that forward. The second program we're talking about looking at is really development subsidy. So in some of these neighborhoods, if you're actually going to develop homeownership opportunities, the cost to build the homes is going to be more than the sales price for that neighborhood, and you're going to need to subsidize development. And that might be by discounting the price of land, or it might be actually by putting additional public subsidy in. It'll depend on the neighborhood and depend on the conditions. On the existing program side, you will have an owner-occupied rehab program. It seems to be generally well-run. What we're recommending changed here is more of an emphasis on exterior improvements, so that you actually have greater impact on the block as a whole, and then greater emphasis on concentration, so that you're starting to hit two or three or four houses on a block or on a couple of blocks. The idea being that you're going to encourage other neighbors to invest in their houses, and that you're going to start to push up property values in that neighborhood as a whole. Similar recommendations with your down payment assistance program. You know, the biggest turning point we look for in our down payment assistance program isn't enough money to help a family get a void paying mortgage insurance premium, because mortgage insurance really eats away -- it's a cost, but it doesn't provide a lot of benefit to the household. Your program is set up that way, so we don't have any change recommended there. Our only real recommendation is to focus on tipping point and fragile neighborhoods for this. That's on the increasing homeownership side. Small rental revitalization. So Norfolk is a city that is somewhat unique in that it has small rental properties basically throughout the city. So I'm talking two units to four units to eight units to 10 units. Most neighborhoods in Norfolk have some of the stock in the neighborhood, and areas where they're well-managed, well-maintained, thinking Military Highway, you don't even notice them there, they're an asset to the community. And other neighborhoods you can see in Norfolk, they're not as well-managed, they're not as well-maintained, and they really start to become a detriment on the neighborhood. There's a need to address this if we're talking about strengthening neighborhoods, and what we're putting forward essentially is a combination of carrots and sticks. The city's already been working on, and we think this is a good approach, of putting together a fund to help landlords start to be able to rehab their properties. So small landlords sometimes lack the financial capacity, or frankly, the wherewithal, to access funding to repair and keep their properties up. So there's a good reason to consider funds, loans, a loan fund to help them do that. That's a carrot. Also on the carrot side, you will have the Rent Ready Program, which you're starting to pilot, which works with landlords who want to do the right thing, who want to be in exchange, you're helping them move through the process, and help them get access to tenants, actually know -- have tenants know that they're a good, responsible, quality landlord. Those are good programs, they're quality efforts, and they're on the -- you know, they help private businesses with good loans. On the stick side, Norfolk is a bit more constrained. You have a code enforcement department that is targeting at the neighborhood level and doing good work. They are generally focused on vacant properties, and that's largely driven by your state regulation. Where your state regulation is, doesn't give them a lot of leverage with occupied properties unless a tenant's complaining, or there really is an egregious issue on the outside of the property they can see. Similar on the rental inspection side, is you don't have -- because of the state law, you don't have a lot of leverage there, unless folks are engaging on a voluntary basis. What we're recommending is that you look at what you can do inside that state law, and think there are -- there is some room for additional leverage and focus on rental properties on your code enforcement side. And it's also more working with, and I want to acknowledge that code enforcement is doing some of this already, but more working with neighbors to identify those properties that are an issue and give them greater focused attention. It doesn't -- you can't -- if you can convince a state legislator to give you more authority, that's a great route, but that's always a tough road. Working with your existing tools in a more focused manner, I think, is a real opportunity. Again, for this initiative, we're also recommending a geographic focus. Finally, there's creating new rental housing. And this is both something that came out of looking at housing needs and looking at how to strengthen neighborhoods. So we saw the majority of renters in Norfolk are paying more than 30% of their income towards housing. That's a real cost burn, that's a real issue. There's a need for additional quality, affordable rental housing, and we think tax credit housing can be a useful tool to both strengthen neighborhoods and address that need. In particular, I'm going to get a little into the weeds here, so stop me and ask questions. We think 4% tax credits are a real opportunity. So there's 9% tax credits, and there's 4% tax credits. And tax credits are essentially subsidy that comes down from the federal government and then is allocated by the state to support affordable rental housing. 9% are a much bigger subsidy, they're about three times as much money, ignore the nine and the four, the ratio's not accurate, about three times as much, but they're competitive. And Norfolk is actually winning those about as fast as they can. There's not really a lot of room for you to win any more of those than you are winning. You're doing as good a job as you could possibly do. So that's something to be proud of, but it means we need to look at 4%. 4% mean are less subsidy, about a third as much subsidy, but there's essentially an unlimited supply of them. So you can do as many 4% deals as your market can support. The challenge with a 4% deal is that it's not enough subsidy usually to make the transaction work. So to actually do a development, a 4% doesn't give you enough money. Usually, you need more subsidy, and that subsidy could come in the form of discounted sale of land from the city, reduction in property taxes, or just subsidy from your federal funding or from a local housing trust fund. We've done some looking at numbers in different transactions, talked to developers here. We think for a transaction, there's 120 units, a 4% deal, you have a gap that's around a million dollars, which a million dollars is a lot of money, but a million dollars to create 120 new units of quality affordable housing is actually amazingly good deal. We had to look at the numbers several times to make sure we were looking at that right, but that's about where it is in your market. So there's a real opportunity to leverage both private financing and federal funding here to increase the supply of affordable rental housing. So I want to pause there, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about what I mean by affordable, unless anyone has questions on that, because I know I went in detail.
I have some questions. Norfolk has more affordable housing than most of the neighboring localities, correct?
That's absolutely true.
And this particular initiative, through reading it, would indicate that we're going to increase the number of affordable housing within the city. From whatever number we have now, we want to increase that number.
That's correct.
Which means that Norfolk is then housing more of the low and median-income housing than it is now, a greater percentage than our neighbors. And all the studies show that the lower-income housing requires more services at more expense to the city. So we're doing this on this end, how are we going to afford it on the back end? How is the city going to then afford the increase in the cost of services to schools and fire and trash and policing?
Sure, so I think this is a good question, and it actually kind of gets into the different parts of affordable housing. With a tax credit affordable housing, it's not -- public housing is one -- for affordable housing, you have the full spectrum from homelessness to homeownership. Tax credit falls somewhere -- affordable housing falls somewhere in the median. I'm going to answer your question, I'm going to move to another slide, because I think it gets to it. In terms of incomes, and we're talking about who lives in tax credit housing, but I want to come back to all the parts of it, but I'm going to talk about this, but these are all really important questions. Tax credit housing, really, for a family of four, we're talking about people who are making -- a household that's making between $42,000 and $35,000. So the cap is about 60% of the Aryan median income, and that's $42,000. And usually, you don't see many residents lower than 50% because they have to pay the rent, and it has to be a four, it has to work for them, so that's about $35,000. So that's higher incomes than many of the neighborhoods in Norfolk that are fragile or tipping point right now. So this is actually potentially a net increase in income for those neighborhoods as a whole. It is still lower income, low, moderate income for the region as a whole, but I think that it's different. These aren't residents who aren't able to contribute to the tax base, and they aren't residents who aren't able to -- they're generally working folks who are more able to contribute, and certainly, for some of these parts of the city, would be represent actually a net inflow of income. So I think it becomes a little bit more of a question about which neighborhoods and how you target it. There's also a challenge, again, getting a little into weeds, you can't just build a tax credit development anywhere. People have to choose to live there. These are residents who have choice, so it really becomes a question of identifying your tipping point neighborhoods where the market's strong and people do want to live there, and there's not quite enough housing, and starting to create that housing. The other way we've seen this used is you do tax credit housing in an area, and you start to get your density higher, and you're able to use that to support additional commercial development and actually bring more market rate development along with it. So it doesn't have to be the only strategy, so but that's -- I think I partially answered your question, but I don't know that I've completely answered it.
Partially, okay.
Is that -- are there other questions on this? I'll talk about this a little bit more, but I want to, I think this is important.
So basically, your affordable housing is not necessarily your absolute low-income housing, is what you're saying?
That's right.
You're looking at a entry-level, middle-class type of income base to determine, in that they're not your low, low, low-income earning family, and they're not your high-income-earning family, but they're not like in the middle of middle income, they're kind of like entry-level, middle income, to try, and they're just lacking the ability to rent or purchase something that is affordable.
Most of these, and again, we have to do a market study if you look at a particular transaction, a lot of these will be residents potentially that are either living in Norfolk or the region as a whole. And this is tax credit housing, look at this next slide, you can see some of the projects are -- is generally really high-quality housing for a couple of reasons. The folks who are invested, the investor in these deals is going to be a large national bank, because they're required, because they have to invest this type of housing for the Community Reinvestment Act, and so they're going to require a very well-organized property management company, and that's frankly the biggest factor that determines whether a rental property is positive or negative in a neighborhood, is if you went and looked at your rental properties that are causing you trouble, you'll find out that you almost never have professional property management, and that's, the correlation is extremely high. Their tax credit properties are very well-regulated, because Bank of America or Wells Fargo or Citibank doesn't want to risk their reputation. So they're generally well-run, you're going to pull in folks from across around the city, and it's another housing option. It's going to have to be someone, people are going to have to choose to live there. I do think there's a legitimate question about the fiscal impact and the fiscal burden it creates. So you have 1,900 units of tax credit housing throughout the city right now. You also see one of the advantages is that it's generally less concentrated than your public housing, which we'll talk about in addition. So I've just talked about the goal of strengthening neighborhoods. We talked about homeownership, increasing homeownership. We talked about revitalizing small rental properties, and we talked about increasing the supply of new rental housing. I'm going to turn over, I'm going to talk a little bit more about deconcentrating poverty, but I do want to keep in mind that these two goals really go hand-in-hand, is as you're deconcentrating neighborhood poverty, you have to be strengthening neighborhoods so you don't actually end up harming any neighborhood. And so why we're keeping these parallel, we're also trying to think about them together through all of our work. So deconcentrating poverty, really two initiatives here primarily focused, one, redevelop public housing. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but really, the driving factor why that has to be part of this is your public housing is your largest concentration of poverty. So if we're talking about deconcentrating poverty, we have to address the public housing. And then the second piece is about requiring mixed-income rental housing. By definition, if you're having deconcentrated poverty, it means you're having more locations where you have mixed-income communities. So if you want to deconcentrate poverty, you have to find a way to make more mixed-income communities. So your biggest concentrations of poverty in the city are really driven by your public housing. Your public housing developments are large, they're located near each other, and that, by its nature, tends to concentrate poverty, so as we're looking at this, we have to figure out how to address that piece of it. There's also a regional aspect of it, and I actually think it gets to your question, your point earlier, is Norfolk has a disproportionate burden both of public housing, but also of poverty. The poverty rate in Norfolk is higher than the region as a whole. So any strategy that involves deconcentrating poverty will almost certainly involve a regional approach to housing. There's real challenges to that anywhere we try to take this approach, because Norfolk only controls Norfolk, so there's a limit to what you can do on a regional basis. But when you already have a 19% poverty rate for the city as a whole, you risk reconcentrating poverty if you don't look at housing on a regional basis. So that's why we've tried to come at this with a regional approach. Redevelop public, redeveloping public housing. So there's, whenever you redevelop public housing, this is a large, major undertaking that takes a long period of time, usually involves a public-private partnership. But when it's done right, it almost always starts with engagement of tenants, then landlords, then the actual bricks and sticks. Doesn't always necessarily work sequentially, you can run those things in parallel, but you really have to be moving on all pieces of those, because that's to be effective. So one of the key programs we talk about is tenant mobility. So whenever we go to a public housing, whenever you go to a public housing site and you start to talk about the potential for redeveloping that site, the tenants have the option, the choice, to take a voucher and move. They don't want to remain for the redevelopment, either because they don't want to be through the construction process, because they've always wanted a voucher, and everyone's, one's never been available, or they're not sure what the neighborhood will be like, and they'd like to go somewhere else. Norfolk, most public housing developments have a significant portion of residents who choose this. Norfolk has data, you know, has experience, it'll be similar to that. The challenge is, if a resident says they want to take a voucher and move somewhere else, often residents don't have the experience or the wherewithal to do that successfully. So they haven't, either they don't have the financial capacity to actually put a security deposit down, or they've had an issue in the past with bill collection on a utility, and that's chipping them off in the ability, or they don't have a credit score, so they can't get the utilities turned on though. And frankly, they don't have as much experience picking the right kind of location for housing. So is this giving me access to transit, to get to my jobs, is it going to allow me to get my child to school, am I talking about changing school districts, is this a good school district? Am I going to be able to stay in touch with my network of family and friends that supports me when my son gets sick and I need to go to work still? Having the places, so we looked at Baltimore and Chicago as two examples that have been pretty effective on this approach, and they both have very intentional and very robust tenant mobility programs that frankly put a fair amount of money towards counseling tenants and providing counseling and guidance about finding a location to live, but also financial support in terms of security deposits, helping clear up credit histories, so that tenants are capable of actually, if they choose to, moving, not staying for the redevelopment, to moving to another location. The other aspect that both of those strategies have in common is they're regional, so they're looking throughout the region and making sure that they're supporting. You can actually take a voucher and move anywhere, and port it to another community. You can move a voucher to another community. There's a lot of paperwork that comes with that, so you need support on the paperwork. And then you also need support picking the right places. Both Baltimore and Chicago really emphasize neighborhoods of opportunity. They define it slightly differently, but essentially, what it comes down to, the criteria come down to lower poverty rates and better school systems, for whenever they're looking for locations to try to move their residents to. And the idea there is to really support the deconcentration of poverty, because we've all experienced this with housing vouchers, you can end up with a re-concentration, because people move to neighborhoods where they know people, or there's only certain neighborhoods where landlords are accepting vouchers, and that can lead to re-concentration. I think that's part of why we were pushed so hard to focus on strengthening neighborhoods while we're also talking about deconcentrating poverty. And that gets a little bit to the second point I want to get into on landlord outreach. Along with your tenant mobility, if you are redeveloping a site, you're potentially creating a significant number of new voucher holders that are going out and looking for landlords that are accepting vouchers. You have to grow that supply, and it has to be an intentional effort, or you will see a re-concentration of poverty. So intentional effort means going in touch with mom-and-pop landlords, who maybe not taking vouchers because they don't understand the program or they're uncomfortable with it, and large institutional rental property owners, and making sure that they understand it, and actually frankly, helping everybody do the paperwork to get it done. There's different spectrums, there's different spectrums for how far people, how these different programs, how a landlord outreach program can actually work. It can be just getting in touch, encouraging people, helping them through the process, to actually providing a guarantee fund, so that you have actually reserves, and you can guarantee to a landlord that their rent will be covered for the year, the first year of the lease, so that their concern, probably unfounded, but certainly a real concern, that the tenant won't make good on their rent, is addressed for at least the first year. Excuse me. So that's the tenant mobility and landlord outreach. You really have to be doing the landlord outreach and the tenant mobility to make sure you can actually do a successful redevelopment, and our recommendation for Norfolk is that both of these be undertaken on a regional scale. Then there's that bricks and sticks part. So this is a master plan redevelopment. That means engaging with a private partner. That means working with HUD. This is a long process, and it's somewhat complicated. The most important part and the most important step is to actually start moving that forward to reach agreement with HUD and say this is your intent to actually redevelop a site. Because until you reach that initial agreement, you can't start to let, empty out units, so allow your natural attrition rate to clear units, and you actually have, you have the risk of And you actually have, you have the risk of more residents, putting more residents out there. It's easier to do a redevelopment if you know longer ahead of time and can let the building, you guys have about a net 15% turnover rate annually. Let that turnover rate reduce the number of units that are actually occupied over time. So those are the different pieces for public housing redevelopment. I know Susan's actually going to give a presentation more about this after. So you guys are going to talk about housing all evening. Is there any questions about that before I move on? I know this is an important area, happy to talk about it in greater detail.
I really would like to, from our retreat, I made note of the 9% that you, you mentioned in September and the 4%.
Yep.
I'm not too sure, I kind of understand, but I really would like more information on that because that's going to have a great impact on what we're trying to do for the city of Norfolk. As well as, and I know we're going to discuss this more, how do we go about the redevelopment of public housing?
So on the 9% and the 4%, I'm happy to, we're happy to set up an offline conversation and follow up with you in depth. But essentially what it comes down to, 9% is greater subsidy, 4% is less subsidy. And then it depends, the development lets you go up to 42,000.
So if you start with the 9 and 4%, one's competitive, one's not competitive. So, so we've been doing mostly the 9%.
And that's three times the amount of subsidies. That's the note that I took. And that the 4% can't do development without other partners.
That's correct. You need additional subsidy. You need additional subsidy. But there is, there's also the questions we started again to is that ban of affordable housing is different than public housing ban, although you can certainly have public housing residents in a tax credit deal. But there are different pieces here. We're happy to talk about that more. All right. So the other side of the coin here, if we are actually redeveloping public housing, we need to be creating, deconcentrating poverty, we need to be creating more mixed-income communities. And there's really two avenues the city can take on this. One, whenever you're doing a tax credit development, you can require and incorporate some portion of public housing residence. And frankly, your housing redevelopment authority is already doing this and doing a pretty good job with it. It's really about memorializing that and making sure it's an intentional process where it's actually linked to any plan for redevelopment. So that you're focusing and giving priority to residents in a place where you'd be doing a redevelopment. So that you're helping to support that redevelopment. You have the systems, you have good agreements and under working relationships with your private developers. Your housing redevelopment has been doing this for a number of years. So all we're proposing here is really a memorialization, codification of your existing practices. That's tax credit development voucher program, which is a very, yes.
Quick question about requiring mixed income. You were recommending the 4% tax credit program earlier. Is that generally compatible with mixed income development?
So there's different ways to define mixed income and I'm not trying to deny it. If you're talking about mixed income with public housing, yes, it can be compatible. There's project-based vouchers and tenant-based vouchers. It just naturally happens that you end up with a lot of residents or some residents who have tenant vouchers who choose to live in those properties. So that just happens naturally. Project-based vouchers, you usually don't see those in a 4% deal unless it's part of a, specifically part of a redevelopment. Because if you put them in a 9% deal, the project-based voucher, you actually get points. And your housing redevelopment authority has been very smart about maximizing the points, which is why you guys have done so well in 9%. So usually you don't see that. In terms of mixed income, in terms of incomes higher than 60% AMI, you can absolutely do that. The problem is essentially you need a pretty large-scale development to do it. Because you, you, for your tax, the tax credit has a bunch of costs that are specific to deal. Whenever you have federal money, there's a lot of rules from people like me in Washington, we put on the funding you get. So you don't want that money to get into your market rate deal because you don't want to follow those rules. So usually you need a big enough development, say 200 units or two buildings next to each other so that you can essentially conduitize the development and keep those costs separate. So it absolutely happens. The real challenge becomes, is your market enough, strong enough to support a market rate development? If it's, if the market's strong enough for market rate development, you can absolutely do the things together. It just becomes a big deal. And you have to figure out the right phasing, you work with your developer on that. Does that answer your question?
It does. If, if we can make that work, it kind of allays some of the concerns about simply taking on the burden of more of the affordable housing in the region and increase our cost. But if we can increase both the affordable housing, but also the market rate at the same time, it's not quite as bad.
It's not just as bad fiscally. It's also, mixed income is, I mean, every, every study, every person who went to school on social policy, this has been the dogma and the right way to do it. It's one of the few areas of social studies where there actually is strong data to support. Like everyone does better when you do it that way. The schools do better, children do better, people do better on employment. That's definitely the right way to approach. It's unfortunately not the way we've set up most of our federal programs, so it's not always easy to do. But it's possible to do. The second piece actually, the second program is on inclusionary housing policy. This is something we, HRA has actually given advice in a number of markets. So inclusionary housing policy is basically a requirement from the city that you have affordable housing in developments. And there's lots of different approaches. And the right approach really depends on the city's goals and frankly, market conditions. When we're looking at Norfolk, what we're, what we're putting out there as a recommendation is that on any housing development where that's getting city support, so getting public lands, some kind of tax abatement or other support, you should be having a requirement for, to include affordable housing. We're not making a recommendation for a straight private market transaction that you include affordable housing in those deals. And in DC, in San Francisco, New York, we would absolutely make that recommendation. But for that to work, there has to be so much profit in the deal that you can scrape that profit and use it to help subsidize the deal. Norfolk's a strong market as deals happening, but it's not so profitable that that won't hurt your development. That will hurt your ability to get, our initial analysis is that will hurt your ability to get market rate deals that you should be going after. So if you're already supporting the deal, we think it makes a lot of sense. This is a public policy goal, you could put that in a requirement. Frankly, it's going to require some additional subsidy from you, but not a huge amount. If it's just a straight market rate deal, we wouldn't make that, we're not making that recommendation to the city at this point. We've done a little, we've done a fair amount of analysis and we talked about those numbers, but didn't seem like a good thing to get into right now. Does anybody have any questions on this initiative? So really together, the, go back. Redeveloping public housing and increasing the supply of mixed-income rental housing, those are our two pieces that we think are going to allow you to deconcentrate poverty. Of the two, the redevelopment of public housing is going to have a much, much bigger impact. Mixed-income rental housing is an important step, but it's going to have a, it's going to create a much smaller number of units overall. But it's still, it's still good policy. It aligns with you, your efforts with what your long-term goals are. So I've gone through each piece of this. I want to hand it back over to Susan and talk a little bit about what the next steps in this process are and where we're at.
Thanks. So again, the next steps are really for us to model some examples of this. And so to take these programs, apply them to some prototypical situations specifically for Norfolk neighborhoods and bring those back to you and show you what they might look like in different tipping-point, fragile and strong neighborhoods in Norfolk. And so we'll take the input that we received tonight and any other input that we might get, apply that sort of to this next step and then be back to, before you sometime in the near future to present this model, prototype housing strategy. And then, excuse me, and then ultimately to also talk about funding sources. Any other questions?
Yeah. I was, I was sitting here and listening to all of the points that were made. And I have said in the past that they are not, you know, three or four cities in the country that have been as successful with urban renewal as Norfolk. You know, Freemason District, things of that nature. In this particular effort, it's Norfolk wanting to gentrify its public housing community. And to do that, Norfolk is going to have to, in my mind, and for my support, it's going to have to make a concerted effort before the first brick is even moved. You know, we had a presentation at, at the retreat, we just had a presentation now, tonight rather. So now it's, it's up to us to be realistic as to how to try to get this done. I would say the best example of mixed income would be Broad Creek, but the funding for that no longer exists. And so therefore, we're going to have to step up to the plate. So now if Norfolk wants Tyewater Park, Calvert Park, 40% of Young Park, doing something over in Diggs, then Norfolk is going to have to pay. It's not going to be as easy as it was back in the 60s when you didn't have representation of low-income people sitting at the table. Now you do. And so it's not going to be as easy as just to come in and say, well, A, B, C, and D. In regards to one, one thing that may mention of people not, residents not being able to have credit and things of that nature, not having the proper moving experiences or expenses. Well, Joe Waldo, who is known in this area, has already said to me that he's going to be right there at the beck and call of the housing, those residents in public housing, to make sure that they get every dime that they should get as far as relocation is concerned. You know, you mentioned the vouchers. And a lot of times residents in Norfolk public housing communities like Roberts and Bowling took those vouchers. And they ended up in, in areas that the property is not well-maintained. One of the things that I believe that has to happen here before we really consider, we have to recreate our occupancy permit program. Because if you start dispersing individuals and they're just ending up in houses that are not as well-maintained as, as they were leaving, then they're going to have a problem. Secondly, this is, the last time we had this issue, and Kenny, I don't know whether you're on the council that time then, but they were making this presentation and it was moving all of the low-income people to the east. And what it, what it would do, Norfolk did a great job of Bramington. And so what you would be doing, you'd be pushing an exorbitant number of residents, you know, into Bramington. And you'd be creating a headache in a neighborhood that was, had a successful, a very successful, I guess you'd say, renovation. And so we really just have to, you know, get together and be realistic about, you know, what we want to do. One of the things, as I had mentioned to some of the members of the administration is this. There are several parcels of land owned by the city of Norfolk and the redevelopment housing authority on the east side of town. You've heard me say that St. Paul Boulevard is a line of demarcation for Well to Do Norfolk and Fort Norfolk. Well, if this is going to be successful, then Well to Do Norfolk is going to have to absorb some of this. And it's only being, being realistic about it. I was just sitting here thinking, we've got that big piece of property where HRT used to be. I don't know what plans they have for that. There's a waste management site, which is on the east side of town. But that's a site that has, the old waste management site, which is bounded by Norfolk Southern and Tyewater. Well, let's say Tyewater Drive on the west, it goes over to Jacobs on the east, Virginia Beach Boulevard, and then Barrow Park on the north. That's a site that, that has assets for a community. When I say assets, you have three schools there. You have Jacobs Elementary, you have Ruffner, which is in the walking distance of the community, and you have Booker T. That property is owned by the city of Norfolk. Norfolk could go in and make an effort to show that they are really interested in being successful. Now, in addition to those schools, you have the Huntersville Neighborhood Center, which has a swimming pool. You have the Huntersville Park. You have Barrow Park, which has a baseball field and a tennis court, an amphitheater and a multi-use land. And so when we, when we, when we sit back and realize what we really want to do, when we complete this gentrification, it has to be successful. And I use the term gentrification because that's exactly what it is. Is you recognize the fact that we have all of this valuable land downtown. We have all of these businesses coming down there, but we have all of the low-income people. And so in order for me to support any of this, it has to be done correctly. Now, I've been talking about it for 15 years or longer. And my major reason for hoping that Norfolk would have stepped forward ahead of time was to take race out of the issue. If you go through and do the things that you've suggested, and when I say you, I'm speaking collectively, I'm not talking about you in particular, but collectively in a presentation, you're going to bring race into the issue. You're going to have, I don't know how many, I don't know, thousands of African-Americans and low-income people that are going to be affected. And so in addition to that, the redevelopment housing authority is doing an awful job of maintaining the property they have now. When I ride through Young, Calvin and Tyewater Park, it's awful. And the only reason that the housing authority has let their property go down so that everybody can say, well, yeah, it needs to go. And this is what, this is what Norfolk does. That's what they did with the Tesco streets. They knew where the drugs were. They knew everything that was going on. But they say, we're not going to put it down there because we need to get a consensus that it needs to go. And so one of the things that the housing authority needs to do right now is go back in there and clean that community up because it's not going to happen tomorrow. They need to go in there, clean it up. They need to repair the curbs, gutters. You know, two or three years ago, we had to insist that Dominion, Virginia Power coming to put lights back in the community because the housing authority had let them go dim and did nothing. And so all I'm saying to you, and when I say I'm not talking about you, and I want you to know I am not talking about you, that it's not going to be a walk in the park. It's not going to be a walk in the park. And if it's done, it's going to have to be done correctly. If not, then there are forces, and I don't mean violent forces, but there are going to be forces that Norfolk is going to have to deal with. I could go home, but I'm not. And thank you. And I want you to know, I'm not directing this at you because I think you're doing a good job. And I just, I just don't want you to think that I'm directing it at you.
Sure, thank you. But I appreciate the comment because we certainly, as we work with the housing authority and other partners, we certainly listen to you and understand that there needs to be a commitment on behalf of the city. And so build first is part of our strategy and we can talk more about that in the future.
What we need to do is get on the bus and ride through the public housing community. And everybody at this table will say, my God, they've got people living like that. It's unbelievable. I don't know what the housing authority is doing with their money. They're collecting rent. The property has been paid for years and years and years and years ago. But it's awful. They need, they need a parking permit program because if you ride through there, every unit has three or four cars and the people don't live there. There's litter. I think our solid waste department, when we go through there and, and make that, the removals, the men on the truck need to have shovels and brooms to make sure that if there's anything that falls out of one of those containers, that they sweep it up. I mean, there's just so much stuff that has to be done. And I think this council needs to take a look at it. That's it. Thank you.
So they're going to come back to us and what, would that timeframe be?
Over the next couple of months, we'll, we'll schedule them to come back. Once we've had an option to run those, those prototypical situations. Sooner rather than later.
So Mayor, I know we have council interest, but if you wanted to have Susan just stay for about six slides to do the purpose built.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, Cora, please. Yes, thank you.
Um, okay, so I'm pleased to offer you, um, a brief update on Purpose Built Communities. Uh, just to, to pull us all back together. Um, Purpose Built Communities is a nonprofit, uh, consulting firm out of Atlanta that helps cities around the country revitalize distressed neighborhoods and break the cycle of poverty. And so as the manager mentioned, um, several of you have heard from Carol Naughton, the president of Purpose Built Communities, um, at your retreat in 2015. I know since then, we've had, uh, uh, some new council members. And so we wanted to start off just with a quick video that will kind of ground us all in the model. Kim will help us here.
We have a model that, from Spartanburg to Omaha to Birmingham to Orlando to Indianapolis to Atlanta and all of the Purpose Built Cities. And you would find that there, there's something to learn in each one of those cities. And we are a giving, loving group, but we also are a group that learns. So we come with, uh, certain humility, knowing that local leaders know their communities best. Uh, we know what has worked in Eastlake and some of the other communities, but we're, we're there to learn, and we're there to learn with you.
Purpose Built is so vital in redeveloping and revitalizing communities because it takes that holistic approach. So you know you have to have the education, the housing, the community services, all of the aspects to really make it a complete picture.
The Purpose Built Community Model proves that it can be done. Every community in this country who chases that kind of a result has to understand that their circumstances and facts are different. But the basic values, the drive, the hope, the belief that change can occur for the better for everyone. All of those are core ingredients in each one of our journeys.
Purpose Built has a wonderful name in community development, and it's starting to really kind of get out there across the board. School systems now are recognizing the value of partnering with Purpose Built.
The role of Purpose Built really is to give a structure to an effort that a lot of people are already sharing. They have a goal, but they don't know how to operationalize that. And Purpose Built Communities helps structure the approach.
The full offering of Purpose Built is lifting up a model for the nation that says you have to be considerate of the interplay of housing, of education, and of wellness. In, in many ways, the cohesion, the building of a fabric of a neighborhood. In that way, I think that Purpose Built is one of the most important community development frameworks that is emerging in our nation.
So, um, for me, what's really exciting about the Purpose Built model is that, um, it works with, uh, the community and local leaders to really adapt this model to the particular circumstances of the community. Um, it's a, a national movement, and it includes a network of experienced professionals from across the country that are made available to cities who join its network. Um, so it's about creating those mixed-income communities, uh, that we talked about in the earlier presentation. But it's also, uh, pairs this with, um, quality schools and services like job counseling and childcare to help existing residents. Um, it, it was founded by, uh, Atlanta developer Tom Cousins and has other investors like Warren Buffett that has really taken this model, uh, to a national level. So again, it is place-based, but also people-centered. Um, and it really requires the open and transparent engagement of the residents in the community, to, to Mr. Riddick's point. And so this is really planning with the resident, residents, not for the residents. It really, uh, works to break the cycle of intergenerational poverty. So it works with the entire family through this, uh, holistic approach. And it insists on best-in-class partners that deliver high-quality services. So again, this is the model. They really feel like there are sort of these three tenants. Um, it's a defined neighborhood that works to deconcentrate poverty by transforming communities with mixed-income housing, high-quality cradle-to-college education, uh, pipeline, and then all of those community wellness ser- uh, services. Career development, life skills programs, financial literacy. And all of this is coordinated and driven by a single-purpose, uh, uh, lead organization, which they call the Community Quarterback. They're, uh, helping, uh, cities across the country, um, do this work where they feel like the criteria for success, um, is present. They currently have sixteen network coun- uh, cities, two of which have just come on board in the last couple of months. Their intention is to have twenty-five, um, in total. And they are all different. They range from large-scale building, uh, rebuilding of, of public housing communities to small infill, uh, developments in the heart of distressed communities. Some use charter schools, some work within the public school system. And so, uh, again, this model is, is adaptive to, to the community. Uh, we certainly hope Norfolk will be the, the seventeenth network partner. Um, and so we have been working, uh, since last year to establish, uh, a network of private champions to help advance this effort. We've had a couple of trips that have included, uh, business, civic, and philanthropic leaders to Eastlake to examine, uh, whether or not this model is applicable to Norfolk. We've had, uh, some other, uh, city staff, business, community, and nonprofit leaders attend the Purpose Book Conference. And so that gives us an opportunity to see this model, um, in action in other communities. Um, we've established this inter-agency revitalization planning group with the Housing Authority and the city, uh, to really think about, uh, the things that Mr. Riddick challenged us with earlier, um, when we're talking about public housing communities. Purpose Built Communities has offered to facilitate those groups for us. And the most exciting thing is that they have committed to Norfolk. Um, they've provided us with a team of experts, uh, to help us in these efforts. So in addition to, uh, the three members of the Purpose Book Ke- Team, Carol Naughton, who's the president, uh, Kathleen Brownlee, who's from this region and has a background, um, in real estate, Brittany Collins, uh, with Purpose Built, who is a former educator. Uh, they've also committed to us two consultants, Renee Glover, um, with the Catalyst Group. She is the previous CEO of the Atlanta Housing Authority, uh, and was for almost twenty years. And so she has pioneered, uh, master-planned mixed-use, mixed-income, uh, developments throughout Atlanta. And so we know that we will greatly benefit from her expertise. In addition, they have provided Rochelle Patton, who is a development consultant, currently a consultant with NRHA, so, uh, familiar with our market and our area, um, and is an expert in, uh, the Rental Demis- uh, Assistance Demonstration Program or the RAD Program. And so, um, in addition to that, again, as we talked about earlier in the earlier presentation, we know that this is not just a Norfolk issue, but a regional issue. And so we have begun, uh, next week, Purpose Built will be in town to lead a, uh, regional conversation on poverty reduction that's being hosted by the Planning District Commission. So we're excited about that. We are looking to secure funding for the establishment of the Community Quarterback Organization and sign an MOU with Purpose Built to become part of the network. And so, um, the fact that they have committed to us and committed this team of experts makes us feel, um, like this is an exciting opportunity and that we can make sure that we do this in the right way. That we can, um, you know, take the data that we get from the housing study and, and make sure that we are taking care of people and creating, uh, community revitalizations that provide opportunities to people. Thank you.
That's what we have, uh, Mayor. And so I'll turn it back over to you. I think it's like council interests.
All right. Mr. Riddick, we'll start with our council interests.
Actually, I don't have that.
All right, Dr. Wibley.
Um, so I noticed that the election board is here. Are we gonna have a discussion about?
Yeah, pop up.
Stephanie's ready for a pop-up.
Yep, Stephanie's ready for a pop-up.
I didn't know I could send a quick results. It's pretty snazzy. See, what else could I ask for?
We anticipated.
Hello, um, actually, we were just completing canvas of our election before we stepped up for the council meeting. Our staff is crunching numbers right now so we can finish the abstracts for the November eighth general and special elections to get them off to the state board of elections. So we're crunching numbers as we speak. Was there anything specific I could address for you?
Did somebody else win?
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, Stephanie, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Over, over again, you have, uh, people that vote way over again. Uh, you have, uh, Taylor, and you have the museum.
Chrysler Museum, Gensquare Community Center, Park Place.
Okay. So let's say, uh, just like you said, Park Place.
We have Park Place.
Yeah, I'm talking about Gensquare on this side of Twenty-first Street.
Okay.
The, uh, south side of Twenty-first Street.
Okay.
You have, you have, uh, Taylor, and you have the museum.
Yes.
So, and Taylor Museum.
Lori and Gensquare.
Lori, Gensquare. And I guess my point is, I have a friend of mine who lives over there. And, uh, he was saying that that little, small area has at least five or six bowling places. Where in some of your other communities, for example, uh, Rosemont.
Okay.
Um, and you have, um, you, maybe Bowling. I don't know how that turned out was. But by not having as many bowling places in some of your, uh, communities that have turnouts like Rosemont, it's voter suppression.
Okay.
You know? And, uh, I'd like for you and the, you know, to look at it.
Sure.
And see, and also, um, it was such a dismal, uh, turnout over at Roughness. Maybe we need to try to get something on this side of Tidewater Drive.
Actually, Roughness was, was great compared to what it's been in the past.
Well, I would have did.
They had over five hundred people come out and vote for this particular election. We've had elections where there's been two people that have voted, and one of them's been an officer of election working the polls. So I was impressed with their turnout.
So you think it's working well?
It is, it is. We did have Norfolk police, um, assisting us on Election Day, directing traffic in the early morning because of the time change and course rollback over the weekend. Um, they assisted early in the morning, they assisted in the evening. We had signs posted assisting with traffic control to slow the speed down for traffic controls, but it has improved. Um, we had looked at, as you are well aware, a number of different locations as a possible alternate for the Hunt and YFCA that we were previously in. But the school has worked out very, very well. And the, the good news is, of course, schools were closed on Election Day. And the teachers had a virtual work day, so that left for ample parking at most of our polling locations that were schools. So we were happy with that. Um, we're happy to look at more polling places. Um, we will be converting from our current voting systems that we've been using. We had consolidated some precincts back in two thousand twelve to conserve on the voting equipment that we had at that time. The General Assembly this year passed a bill that is requiring us to move from a touchscreen voting system, which is what we have now, to paper ballots with an optical scan, which means we are going to have to go out and purchase all-new equipment and paper ballots for each and every election enough to satisfy the number of registered voters plus extra in case somebody messes up how they mark on a ballot or you have people that turn up that think they're registered to vote but are not registered to vote. So we're gonna be moving to a whole new system base with voting going forward, um, which is gonna require some additional funding, um, that we have been projecting out for years. We knew it was coming, and by two thousand twenty, July two thousand twenty, we have to have that new system in place.
Stephanie, did you in assembly appropriate any money for that?
No. No.
How could they do something like that?
Oh, no.
Girls' guys in Virginia, not to.
There's no money tree that I'm aware of.
Where are you in need?
No, so, so we will be moving the, the cost, I mean, there will be an upfront cost, of course, of purchasing equipment for the optical scan counters, but your cost per election will go up because of the cost of paper ballots. So we will be moving for that. Um, with that, of course, we can look at two, I know you were talking about Rosemont. Um, that's one of our larger precincts. Sherwood is a large precinct. We had consolidated from the school and the rec center because they're literally right next door to each other. So we had moved that to consolidate the equipment to help. But we'll be happy to take a look at where our high concentrations of voter registrat- registrants are to see about possibly if we might be able to, to split some of those and look at other, uh, buildings. We try and stay in the city-owned buildings as much as possible because the city has more control with the schools, the rec centers, the libraries. They were very supportive. Um, they have been over the past, and, and we appreciate all of our support that we've gotten with the elections from general services, the police, director of libraries. Even our libraries closed that were used as polling places. They were closed to the public other than voting purposes, and we appreciated that to help.
Dr. Wibley and Mrs. Graves.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So are you, are going to address for us the problem at Larchmont?
With the lines at Larchmont? I can tell you.
For those of you that are, the line all day.
There was.
It was over an hour and a half.
There were some lines at Larchmont. A lot of that was due to Old Dominion College students who thought they were registered at either Lambert's Point Community Center or Old Dominion Precinct, which is at Larchmont Elementary. Um, most of these students did end up voting provisional ballots. They were registered in other localities, not here necessarily. And there was a lot of, um, I don't know if you wanna say confusion, but there was encouragement on behalf of some of the people working outside of the campaigns, encouraging those students to go back and vote provisional ballots when they were not registered here. So that did slow some of the lines when you have several hundred, if not thousands.
When I was at Larchmont, they pulled the students out to a separate line. And so the lines for those of us that were non-students were still, I waited an hour and forty minutes.
What they were trying to do, we weren't trying to separate the lines, but they were trying to verify who was registered to, to get them processed. And if there was somebody that needed assistance because they couldn't find them in the poll book, call downtown to verify, are they registered here? Are they registered, you know, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News? Or are they registered out of state?
But what I'm saying is those people that you verified then were not voting inappropriately, and the lines were an hour and forty minutes.
Yeah, I, I don't know about the, the length of the line, but I know we did have some lines at some places. Typically, the lines were longer before people went to work and in the evening when they got off of work.
This has been the second time this has been. In fact, this was by far the worst. And the people that were working the polls, bless their heart, I mean, they were working very, very hard. And they were very frustrated with the support they had and the fact that they could not provide services for our voters for an hour and forty minutes. And apparently, it was reported it was the longest line in, in Virginia. So, um, I mean, I just am hoping that you guys are not just saying, well, that was a busy time, or maybe some students. And if it were the students, then we need to work that better because we need, we want those students to vote.
Right.
And we need to do whatever we can to include the students that they understand. I understand there was some confusion on how they had registered. But the bottom line is, we want as many students, as many people as possible to vote. And to have them wait for an hour and forty minutes is just like Mr. Riddick says, is disenfranchising many of them because they're not gonna be able to stay.
We used to have a polling place on campus years ago and were moved off of campus. That would be something to consider too in talking with ODU for the students.
Larchmont Library, which is right up the street, had, had no lines.
Well, we tried to move some of that before, back in two thousand twelve, and that was not approved by council to consolidate and move to that. Okay, I'm happy to do that. That's another problem. Yeah, no, we, we wanna concentrate that. We, we tried to staff the polling places with extra personnel. We knew there was gonna be a heavy turnout, especially with the presidential election. It's like winning the lottery. Everybody comes out once every four years and, and votes in that particular election. So, um, we're working on that, working on process improvements to help with the line control. But if we could possibly even create a location on campus, which we are happy to talk with ODU, um, talk with them about maybe putting something onsite for the students that would separate that whole segment out where they could vote. And it would create a lot less confusion in surrounding neighborhoods with the people that are registered there. That's an option that we could look at too.
Mrs. Graves?
Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you for all the extra effort that you guys did put into Roughness because I know that was a huge concern. Um, you know, we looked at it, and then we looked at it again.
Yes.
And, um, a lot of the suggestions that we put forth, you, you all, your office combined with the city staff and everything, um, made that a safe place to vote, crossing the street and all those kinds of things. So thank you for that. Um, I, that was what I had, but, um, Tommy has no voice. Imagine that, you guys. Um, and so he's asked me to just let you know that, um, his precinct ran out of I Voted stickers, and he voted at four o'clock. So after four o'clock, there were no more.
We stashed them there? They must have been given them to all the kids that came because we sent a lot of I Voted stickers. Um, okay, I wasn't aware of that. I know we sent out more, but I know sometimes when the families come all together, everybody gets a sticker.
Mrs. Johnson?
Uh, Ms. Isles.
Hi.
Hi. I just wanna say thank you, um, for helping me out the la- at the last minute. I got a call and an email from, uh, Richard Bowling Elementary. Um, they were having, um, mock elections. And I sent the email to Ms. Isles, and she provided sample ballots, um, for every child, so almost six hundred children, as well as the I Voted stickers.
They got all your stickers.
As well as the I, um, voted stickers. And, um, thank you for that because it was a, a great. And thank you for that because it was a great day, pre-kindergarten through fifth grade, voted that day. So, thank you so very much. And for Richard Bowling Elementary, if you went in to vote at 6:00 a.m., you didn't get out till 7:30.
Really?
Well, it's one of the highest.
Right.
Voting precinct, as Mr. Riddick said. It is always consistent.
And we're going to be coming back to council after we get through this election about relocating into the new school. The old school was, the name changed to Norfolk C-Sup, and we sent out notices to the 3,047 registered voters before the election to remind them it was still in that building. We had not moved it, but the building had a new name, so just to remind them where to go on Election Day. So, we didn't disenfranchise anybody from showing up, and we posted signs at the new school to let them know, please go back to the old school in case you happen to come up the street to the new school, we're not there yet. Of course, the doors would have been locked because the kids were out. But we appreciate, we've been working a lot with partnerships with the schools, with mock elections. We actually went to another school, too, Norfolk Christian, voted the 2nd through 5th grade, passed out some constitutional amendments for the adults so they could learn what was on the ballot, but we enjoy doing that. We also introduced some election pages this time, which are students that were volunteering to work as officers of election, some of them from ages 9 through 12th grade. And we had a couple of foreign exchange students that were participating at TCC. They could do everything other than handle the ballot because they were either underage or they were foreign exchange students, but they were very excited about the process. We're hoping to introduce more of those going forward because that's a great untapped potential. They have a lot of energy and they're excited about the process. And as you know, our citizens that are volunteering, we're all aging, so we need to get some more youth involved. So, we're very excited about that. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Back to council meetings.
Since I've been sitting at this august table, we have had discussions. Do you know that toy where you hit one thing down and it goes down and then another one pops up and then you hit that one, it goes right up? Well, that would be speeding issues in our city. And I think every one of us, I know, has brought up problems that we have speeding. I mean, I'm always talking about Hampton Boulevard. We could talk about James Tom Cressith. Our last meeting, a woman came up talking about speeding around Norfolk State. And, you know, the police, to their credit, does great things to respond. They bring out the signs to tell you that you're going too fast and the increased surveillance, and then that works, and then the other one pops up. And I just wonder if instead of trying to just keep putting Band-Aids on something, I mean, I don't know about you, but nobody speeds in Emporia. When you're on your way to Emporia, nobody speeds, and anybody that does deserves their ticket because it's known for a place that gives tickets.
Absolutely.
So, there's got to be something else that we can do in this city. This is a concern for our neighborhoods. We've had concerns around school zones. It's really a detriment, I think, to our city. And I don't know what we can do, Bernard, for this, whether it's, I mean, what if we set a speeding ticket cost 500 dollars? I know that's being, but maybe not.
They did abusive fees at one point, didn't they? And the General Assembly.
I mean, is there something we can do to be known as Emporia of the West?
Yeah, that's not, what I've been sitting here, and obviously nobody heard me, maybe you.
Maybe they'll hear us together.
Yeah, I've been saying this for the longest time. I would imagine that we probably need to create a vigorous traffic division. One time, the police department gave out a certain number of tickets, and our resident Virginia pilot wrote an article saying that Norfolk had a quota of giving tickets. But I could, you know, I'm like you. When you're going through Emporia to get on 95, you know what's going to happen.
You know.
You know, years ago, when I was a youngster, it was the same thing with South Norfolk. If you went through South Norfolk, you knew that it was going to be speed control. And I'm with you. I would like for Norfolk to be recognized as an area that you have to do the speed. One time, if you went down Zaygarden Road, Chesapeake Boulevard, there were two main streets that you knew you were going to get a ticket. So, Mr. Manager, I don't know what wisdom you can leave, you know, with the interim or the police department. I don't know how much it would cost us to have a full traffic, you know, division. But, and as I said in the past, and Dr. Wibley, excuse me, I don't want to step on your tab. Well, some of the biggest offenders, school bus drivers and city employees driving our trucks, and that's dangerous. And so.
You put GPS on those buses, you'll know how fast they're going.
So, but I'm going to ask for Dr. Wibley.
But I mean, I think we need to be serious about this, you know, not just, yeah, gosh. I mean, Bernard, are you aware of things that we can do?
Well, I know that what Emporia and Wakefield do is just heightened enforcement. And so, that Newport News has a similar program. So, you get the two-lane bottleneck and hit the four lanes, and there's a police officer, a state trooper waiting for you.
Well, we have neighborhoods right now that are considering hiring their own security because we don't have proper enforcement or what they perceive as adequate enforcement for crime. So, I don't think we can make the argument that we're going to be able to have more people, more police out there enforcement unless you all have some magic idea on that.
So, let me get back to you on whether we can increase beyond what is currently being charged for a conviction.
Is that a state mandate then?
Let me check to see whether there's anything under our charter or any flexibility.
So, if it's the will of the council, next week, we'll bring in Mike, and we'll talk about what resources we get. And what we've done will be data-driven, and we'll come back with what could be a solution for the issue that's at hand.
How about if we just put up those signs that say aircraft monitoring?
Yeah.
Unless you actually get a ticket in the mail, it doesn't help. Once a couple of people get a ticket in the mail from an aircraft.
All right. So, Dr. Wibley, was that your last?
I'll wait for next time.
Tommy, is your interpreting going to be Angela? Tommy, you want to?
Yeah.
You're good, okay. All right, Angela.
Two things. Well, actually, one, and James has been working on this. I don't know, I don't see James. Okay. With the coffee tree over in Park Place and the parking on that street, I don't know what we can do. I know the street sweeping requirements, and I get that part of it, but he has a resident, he's got a mixed-use building where the coffee shop is on the first floor and the apartments are on the second floor. And the street sweeping piece I get, but the parking for customers is problematic because people come in, they stop to get a cup of coffee, and they come back and they have a ticket on their car. And we need to fix that area at least during the daytime hours or during business hours. I get that it's heavily residential, but there's a business there. And their business is kind of, you know, it's not just walking people from the neighborhood, but it's folks driving and whatnot. And so, I really like it if we could resolve that. Okay, so that, because we want to be business-friendly, and his customers are not going to be happy if they get tickets and they're not going to. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And then, when you bring Mike back next week for traffic and speeding, could we get an update on the high-speed chase? And then where that all, you know? I know Mr. Riddick has brought that up several times, so let's see what's going on there.
I just wanted to say thank you, although Mike and Chief Boone and Chief Goldsmith are not here this evening. Last night, I attended Wellington Oaks Civic League, and I got lost, although I know where the building is, I still got lost. And there were two officers in the community. And so, I flickered my lights and put my hands out to tell them to stop, and they did. And they proceeded to give me directions. But what they did mostly was they got in front of me and they took me directly to the center to help me get where I needed to be. And that meant a great deal to me. It showed that they just wanted to help a lost person in the community. So, I wanted to say thank you to them and also to Team Norfolk for accompanying me to the Civic League. We got a lot of work done working with Wellington Oaks. So, thank you.
I have three things. The first is something that was discussed during the election, our municipal election in May, and I'd like to bring up again. I wanted to inquire with regards to Norfolk's hiring policy, whether or not we can include a nondiscrimination clause for sexual orientation and gender identity. That's something that has to come through council. It's not an HR issue, it's a code issue. I don't think that currently exists, but it'd be something that I'd like to look into and see if that's something that my colleagues would support.
Yes, it is something that we can do and exist. And I left you a copy of the current one.
Okay.
As you walked in today, probably haven't seen it, but that it does not include gender identification and maybe can be updated, definitely can be updated. And so, that Jack Cloud is working with HR, and it's within the city administration, city council authority to regulate in that area for its own hires, and it starts to lessen the further you get away from city hall.
Thank you. Number two was another item, just sort of bringing it back up, we talked about previously. One was the status of electronic voting. We had a presentation about it, and I'm curious what the findings were in terms of the cost, et cetera, so maybe if we get an update on that. I think that there seems to be a general interest on that, depending on what the cost is. And along those lines as well, the status of discussion about whether or not we want to broadcast the entirety of our council meetings, including the non-agenda items. I'd like to bring that back up. I'm in favor of that. And I.
I'm most of us.
So, I don't know what the, how we proceed with that. I don't know if that is a clerk's issue, a council issue, a city manager issue, but...
I might say anytime after December.
What was your third one?
The third one, Marcus is favorite, just a recommendation that at some point, we, believe it or not, need to address dog park policy and a review of that as well.
There is no policy.
There is a policy.
There's no policy. It's paid up?
And I think it's a, I think it's a good start, but based on recent activity, I think it might be a good opportunity for us to consider another review.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I would recommend, as a council, that we consider a consent agenda for special exceptions that have come up from the planning commission with unanimous recommended approval, that they be placed on a consent agenda. Of course, can be taken off the consent agenda by anybody who is interested on counseling. If anyone signs up to speak against it, it could certainly come off. But it just seems that.
More here and fewer.
Well, it seems that some people sit in the back of the room all mean long.
We could do that.
So, I recommend we do a consent agenda for the unanimous special exception approvals and also for the tax rebates that we tend to, a fair amount of.
We did that.
Yeah, we collect them all in one.
Tax rebates, we do.
Okay, good.
It's a block.
And then, I would agree with the request that our employment policy, nondiscrimination employment policy be upgraded, updated to include sexual orientation.
Me, too.
Mrs. Graves?
I just have one more thing, and I just think.
At this time.
I feel so bad.
You made me sad. I like that song, though.
I know the song. I just wanted to say that, you know, I know a lot of us go around to different civic leagues and events and things like that, and just in light of the recent elections and all of the unrest, I think that it's just very incumbent upon us as locally elected officials and local government to make sure that we are promoting an atmosphere of peace, of acceptance, of mutual respect in meetings and things like that when we're dealing with constituents. And regardless of what our own individual opinions are about the election or the outcome of the election, that we just don't play into people's fears. And that goes for, you know, as far as the administration trickling down to staff and things like that. There've been a couple of incidences, you know, like at schools and things like that with children. And so, I think that as the leadership of the city, we need to just be aware that these things are happening and make sure that we promote and foster an environment that is respectful and that is kind, you know, it's make America kind again, you know? I think we can bring that to the table to all of our residents and just assure them that, you know, as their elected officials, their leaders, their whomever, that, you know, we are going to work in the best interest of the entire city and we're not going to be divided by y'all.
Yeah. So, Mr. Clerk?
Remove the members of council assembly and close meeting on November 15, 2016, at 6:35 p.m. for purposes set out in clauses 1 and 7 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Freedom of Information Act. And that is, one, discussion of candidates for performance of city boards, commissions, or authorities; and seven, consultation with legal counsel, briefings by staff, and city attorney on litigation regarding a building on Prince's End Road and on issues with the business on Cleveland Street. Ms. Graves?
Hi.
Ms. Johnson?
Hi.
Ms. McClellan?
Hi.
Mr. Riddick?
Hi.
Mr. Smigal?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Dr. Wibley?
Hi.
Mr. Alexander?
Hi.